Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Friday, July 1st, 2022, to order. Can we have a roll call, please? Here?
Here.
We are here this morning to discuss and consider approval of legal representation for Commissioner Griffin in a quote warrant to lawsuit filed against him. Do you like to make a comment on that?
Um, well, I, uh, I guess I would open by saying, you know, I mean, this, this lawsuit is to remove me from my, my capacity as county commissioner and prevent me from ever running as county commissioner, too, on, uh, on the basis that I was a part of an insurrection in Washington DC and which I haven't been charged or convicted of anything of the sort. But whenever, whenever I approached Roy with, uh, with the possibility of representation through the county, um, I just requested a statement, um, and, and with an official statement from the county with grounds as to why, um, the county won't represent me through this. And, uh, I wasn't able to get that. Um, and, uh, that's kind of what's led us here today. Um, um, you know, I, uh, yeah, I just, I'm just looking for an official position from Otero County, um, as to why, uh, I wouldn't be represented. Um, so, uh, Roy asked us if they wanted to schedule a meeting, um, and I thought, well, if that's the only way that I can get a position from the county, um, then that's what we would need to do. But I see that you have the opinion of Minot Martinez, um, but again, that's not the official position of the county. Um, but I guess, yeah, um, that, that's why, that's why I'm here today. I apologize to, to, uh, to y'all for having to have this today. I know it's put you in a tough spot. Um, and, uh, and it's not my intention. I don't mean to put you guys in a, in a hard spot. I don't feel like, um, y'all have a legal opinion. Y'all have a political opinion. Um, and then prior, uh, every time we've handled a legal issue, it's always been done in executive session. It hasn't been done in a public meeting like this is being done today. Um, and I feel like that's the way this should have been handled. But here we, here we sit, and I guess we can get, uh, the response from y'all on record and anybody else that wants to speak, so.
And I thought you wanted this meeting. I thought you called this.
No, I wanted a position from the county. And that's all recorded in back and forth emails. I asked Roy for official position statement with grounds and standing as to why I would not be represented by the county. And I never got that, that I saw anyways. Maybe you did. Maybe you, maybe you, but I didn't.
So as far as an official statement from the county, uh, I can't give that. Um, official statement has to come from the commission. I can provide advice to the commission on how they should, um, do something, but, um, an, an official county position comes from the commission. That, that's why, uh, if that's what Commissioner Griffin wanted, uh, we need to do the meeting. Uh, I provided just my legal opinion, uh, but, uh, we wanted something more, uh, and as far as, is that, um, I sought, uh, internal opinion from Minot Martinez to ensure that, uh, I wasn't missing something. Um, provided that to you. Um, I can go over, uh, my legal analysis, uh, if you'd like, um, but otherwise, for an official statement on this matter, uh, has to come from the commission and, uh, because of Commissioner Griffin's interest in this, he cannot vote on it. Um, it would just be, uh, Commissioner Matherly and Mark Clark voting.
And if I may, um, on the Minot Martinez, um, this firm, this was the same firm that Michael always referred to and Michael Eschman. I don't know who this group of attorneys are, um, but I know who Michael Eschman, our previous county commissioner was. He was the county, he was an attorney that, um, that filed a harassment complaint against me, um, that he had compiled for like two years. And that complaint was investigated by Jarmi Law, and that complaint was found by Jarmi Law to be unfounded and unwarranted and no basis to it. So, um, I, I don't, whoever Minot Martinez and Springer is, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I see their, I see their response, um, and it talks about somebody that's been criminally charged. And again, I haven't been criminally, I've, I've been right now as the record says, I have been convicted on a nonviolent misdemeanor. I have not been a part of an insurrection or any violence, and that was proven through my acquittal. We'll have order. I was proven through my acquittal, um, by Judge Trevor McFadden, who acquitted me on disorderly conduct and disruptive behavior. So that proves in itself that I was not part of an insurrection. I was part, I was charged, and I, and I believe I was charged unfairly by Judge Trevor McFadden because, as I had stated, I did not know that that was a restricted zone. I did not know it was unauthorized. But... Look, this is hard enough without y'all laughing, okay? And if you want to laugh, there'll be order. Have a little bit of respect. Um, but anyways, yeah.
Would you like to give us kind of a summation of, of, you talked to New Mexico Counties Association about this, and they pretty much concurred with this letter that we got from Minot Marte?
I have spoken to New Mexico Counties initially, uh, to see if there would be insurance coverage, and then later about this issue of whether the county would provide, uh, could legally provide, uh, representation. Um, and it pretty much the same thing, uh, that my analysis as well as, uh, the other analysis we got. Um, initially, this quote warrant to lawsuit, so there's certain, um, actions that can be brought against an individual who is a public employee in the legislature has said, um, that the government entity will cover them. And that is, if there's a, uh, a civil lawsuit, a civil rights lawsuit, an emperor lawsuit, um, says that that official will be defended, uh, as long as they were acting in their capacity, um, as a public official. There's nothing in the quote warrant to statute that, um, specifies that type of coverage, uh, or addresses it. Um, so that, uh, means the anti-donation clause controls. And so the county is prevented from providing that, uh, that service or, um, to a public official. Uh, the second part of that would be, even if there was that type of, uh, clause in the quote warrant to statute that covered would be provided, then the analysis goes to, was the official acting in their official duties and scope of duties and capacity, or were they acting in their, their personal capacity? Um, so looking at that analysis, the evidence supports that Commissioner Griffin was in Washington DC in his personal capacity. He was not paid by the county. He was not, uh, voted on or directed by the county to attend, uh, the, uh, the events of January 6th. Uh, social media posts, uh, videos, all, uh, support, uh, being there for Cowboys for Trump. Uh, it's a private organization. Uh, what the, uh, courts have ruled is PAC. Uh, it was, it was in furtherance of, of that organization. It was not, uh, related to county duties. Uh, county duties and the commissioner specified in the constitution, New Mexico constitution and New Mexico statute, and they relate to make local matters. Uh, and so I would say, even if, if there's not coverage, because there's nothing that specifies there would be coverage, uh, for a quote warrant to lawsuit, even if there was, there would not be, uh, representation, uh, coverage because, uh, it was not in the official scope of duties of the commissioner.
You know, um, and to just rebut that just a little bit, um, you know, I was, I was there on January 6th because of election fraud. Um, and that's been, uh, the focus of my representation as a commissioner, um, over the course of the last, well, before and leading up and now, right now currently is, is, is the fraud that took place in our, in our 2020 election fraud that has been proven substantiated, and there's evidence of through the canvas that we had in Otero County that nobody wants to look at and consider. They just want to call us fools for saying that there was voter fraud. Um, and they want to try to shut down every effort to, um, come up with the evidence that is there just the same way as a criminal tries to shut down an investigation. A criminal doesn't want any evidence to be exposed. And through our efforts here in Otero County, um, we've, we've exposed that. We've substantiated it. We've came up with direct evidence that the media doesn't want to look at, or the government doesn't want to look at. But that's why I was there on January the 6th. I was there to peacefully protest, which I did, to stand up against the fraud of the, of the 2020 election. So I do think there's a correlation between, uh, my representation. Like if it's, if, if I was there, um, under the guise of, of Cowboys for Trump or under the guise of, uh, of a Otero County Commissioner, the platform's the same, and that's to try to bring representation to many that want our elections looked out closer. So, um, that's why in a back and forth with Roy, I told Roy, I said, you know, I was there on January 6th to try to, try to represent those that don't have a voice.
Do you have anything, Commissioner Matherly?
Well, I don't feel like that we can legally do this and support any representation just because of the anti-donation clause and the other things that have been written out in these legal opinions that we've gotten. So I'm going to go ahead and, and call this. I'm going to make a motion.
Well, I, I would, I don't want to call it to vote yet. I'd, I'd like to, a little bit more, um, input on it, Vicki, because, you know, we can take a stand on the, in our, in our position as county commissioners. We're, we're so bound and controlled.
It's pretty black and white here, Coy. I mean, it really is. And I know you're in a bind, but it's...
Well, you know...
It's just not, it's just not...
This is, uh, this is, this, this case, this lawsuit is, it's much bigger than me. It's, 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 it's to try to remove anybody that will stand up to the state government and the federal government. And these attacks haven't just started. They've been trying to remove me from office since the, pretty much the beginning of my term. Brian Cologne, Hector Balderas, all, all political driven progressives have done all they can to try to force me out of my office. It wasn't that long ago, uh, they were all saying that I couldn't make videos in my office. That was the big thing. They were going to remove me. Then I couldn't wear my C4T brand up here because I was, I was, uh, it was self-gain or, or personal gain, what they kept telling me. Personal gain? Yeah, are you serious? You know, like I gained anything at all personally. This position of representation has cost me everything. I can't even, I can't even take my, you know, I can't even go out hardly in public without getting verbally assaulted because of the attacks and many attacks that are generated by people here that are smirking right now and laughing and smiling, and, and they love it. They, they thrive off of this sort of stuff. But I want to tell you something. The legal framework is being set right now to come after President Trump as well. You know, they're, they're, they're trying to get all of this legal framework in place because they're going to use it against President Trump. We can make a stand right here. I could, we can make a stand on the county level. We could fight back. I think as far as the recall goes, you know, the people in my district have already spoken. They've spoken through the failed recall that many here work so, so hard and so frivolously to try to get me recalled through the people, and they failed with 28%. The people spoke. The people spoke, and the people want me, through that failed recall, the people spoke that said that they want me to continue in my capacity as county commissioner. Many here shake your heads, but let me tell you, you're shaking your heads in the minority. Because if you were the majority, the recall would have went through. But, you know, I don't know. It's, it's, uh, I think many times politicians are like water. They take the path of least resistance, and they're usually led by a, an, a bar certified attorney that is telling them, you can't do this, you can't do that, you're going to get in trouble, they're going to sue you. Uh, we, there's no greater time than right now to stand together and stand united and stand strong. Because if we don't, these tyrannical Marxists... These tyrannical, these, these tyrannical Marxists that want to, want to kill babies by supporting, by supporting abortion, that infringe on every right that we have, every freedom that we have. They're, they're coming at us. But I, I'll tell you, um, I'm extreme, I'm, I'm disappointed in, in President Trump as well. I'm disappointed that I don't have any more support from their side, too. Because, you know, I mean, here, I would rather go with the county. I'd rather go with you guys. I'd rather go forward on the county level, um, united, fighting back. But, um, you know, um, it, it, it really feels like, um, I've been fed to the wolves in a lot, in a lot, in a lot of ways, you know? I mean, if you, right now with this hearing right here, it's, it's, it's full of people, probably 90% that hate me. Um, and the media coverage, since I've started this, if you Google my name, all you see is CNN, Politico, The Daily Beast, The Washington Post, all of the, all of the most major left-wing media platforms, but not once do you see Fox News, OAN, Newsmax, any of the other conservative platforms that maybe would hold more of our supporters, more supporters than I believe our cause. But, um, but, I mean, as I, as I stayed whenever I was sentenced, um, on January 6th, or on, uh, June 17th, um, you know, I'll respect the decision of the, the courts. I respect the decision of the county commission board. We might not always agree. Um, but, um, but my faith and my confidence doesn't rest in the hands of man. It rests in the hands of God. God is my defender. God is my refuge. And God is the one that is going to get me through this. And that is the reason why I'm such a threat, because I'm not intimidated, and I'm, I won't be threatened, and I'm not going to back down. And at the end of the day, we will win. Why? Because God wins. That's why. But...
Well, I, I wish you the best in this, and I, I definitely encourage you to get legal representation, but I just don't think we can do it through the county.
But wouldn't it be taking away the will of the people, Roy?
Um, but we gotta work within the confines of the constitution and the statute.
But if I'm a duly elected county commissioner, it's been established by the majority of the people. I've already went through a recall that failed. The people spoke through the recall and said, we want Coy to remain in there till the end of his term. But if the county pushes me out there and lets me get removed from office, wouldn't that be taking away the will of the people?
Wow. I mean, it's one way that it can be looked at, but the statute was passed by the legislature and exists for, uh, the ability of citizens to remove someone that they believe is not, is done something wrong while in office. Um, it's, it's the same analysis as why the county couldn't represent you in the recall proceedings.
But, but what you say, but done something wrong while in office. What have I done wrong?
They're, they're going to have to argue that for the, your presence.
No, but, but we're not, we're talking about me getting removed right now. So if you said that I did something wrong while in office, what did I do wrong?
That's not my opinion that you did something wrong. Um, the, what is being argued in that quote warrant to lawsuit is that you did something wrong. And the basis is simply your presence at January 6th, and a court is going to have to determine whether that was a protest or whether it was an insurrection is, is some claim.
So, yeah, so the courts will determine that. So in the meantime, I can just get, I can suffer, I can suffer the consequences of something that I haven't been convicted on through the courts? I mean, and, and, and by doing that, you take away, uh, the will of the people and you remove a duly elected, legally elected official just on an allegation or an accusation? And, and the county doesn't have any responsibility in protecting an elected official from being removed from office?
No.
I, I, see, that's why I, that's why I, you know, through our back and forth, through our communication back and forth, that's why I was grasping for understanding, because I don't understand how this can even happen. How you can, how I, how I could, I could make an accusation against the sheriff and say, well, you know, I saw David, um, swerve over the yellow line the other day. I think he was driving under the influence, and make a move to remove David from office. And, and, and the county wouldn't have any stake in representing David from being removed? And if I was a big, powerful enough attorney and had enough money, I could remove David? Is that the way the system works?
David would be responsible for his own defense in that, in that case.
Interesting. I just, I don't, you know, I mean, I just don't, I don't understand it. I, 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 uh, go ahead, Denise. You, you're, you're just waiting patiently there. Sit up to the mic and state your name for the record. I'm sure everybody will want to hear you.
We weren't going to have public comment today.
Oh, well.
My name is Denise Lang Brown. You have been convicted of a crime in a criminal court, not a civil court, but of a crime because you broke laws. And you were convicted. That actually makes you a criminal. The lawsuit is based on the fact you were convicted. You were convicted of a crime. You sat here at the county commission talking about all the guns you were going to take to the January 6th. You sat here and exactly said where you were going to put your whatever rifle and your handgun and blood was in the room.
I did it publicly and openly.
That was, that's not peaceful. There's nothing peaceful about talking about that. But this is about a lawsuit. You were responsible for what you did. It's not on county time. You've got tens of thousands of dollars in multiple GoFundMe sites.
I'll show you every, I'll show you every financial record I have.
You were convicted of a crime. You're a criminal. And that's what the lawsuit is. This isn't about, they're saying you're going to be removed or not. It's just whether or not we, the taxpayer, should pay for your defense. And when you have spoken about, um, the only good Democrat is a dead Democrat.
And you know, and you know what? It's a shame. Listen, listen to, no, I've never thrown anything out.
You are asking for me to pay for your defense, that arrogant law and a small man.
You know what I'd like to, you know what I'd like to say, though? What, what I'd like, what I would like, what I would...
Most of us are tired of hearing you whine.
You know what I'd like to say?
Most of us don't like whining, and we're sick of hearing you whine.
It's too bad, you know what I'd like to say, Denise? It's too bad that Democrats don't care more about dead babies than they do dead Democrats. It's a shame.
Your attempt to change the narrative by making insults that have nothing to do with this shows you're trying to change the narrative altogether. You were convicted of a crime. You want other people to pay for your defense, and that's wrong.
Okay. You can sit down now.
Okay. All right. We're going to keep this, we're going to keep this...
But if, but if you're convicted, say, of a misdemeanor, a misdemeanor charge like I am, that's not grounds for removal from office, is it? I'm not, you're, we're going to have order. You've, you've said your piece. Is that, that's not, uh...
I don't think that's the sole basis of what they're arguing is.
I know they're arguing that I was a part of an armed, of an armed insurrection. But the, but the, but the fact of it is, the fact of it is, is that I was acquitted on disorderly conduct and disruptive behavior, which only further proves that I was a part of a peaceful protest. Now, did I, did I cross into a restricted zone? I did. I'll admit that. But I didn't know that that zone was restricted. I didn't know that it fell under the guise of unauthorized, as God is my witness.
That's potentially beneficial for you, uh, you know, in this case. That's, that's something that, uh, can be presented from your side that, uh, potentially negates their, uh, their argument. It's helpful to you. But as far as county representation, um, it, it, taking the opinion that you were acting here in official duties acts counter to what we're arguing in some of our other lawsuits, such as the Open Access case, uh, where we argue that, um, certain records aren't available to the public because they're your personal records. And, um, if we now say that you were there, um, and you were on, tie that to county duties, then we're, we're chipping away at our argument on those other, other positions. Can't have it both ways.
I mean, what, what took me to Washington DC was election integrity, you know, was the fraud that we've, I might stay again for the record, since nobody wants to admit it, the fraud that was exposed in Otero County with evidence and was substantiated. I know everybody that, I, I, but, you know, I mean, and so I, I went to stand peacefully and protest, and that's what I've been trying to do right here. And that's why I have come under such heavy attack, to be removed from office, because they want to remove anybody that's willing to stand up and speak out and not be threatened and not cow down to them, but be willing to go the distance. And that's why they hate me. That's why they want, I think, I think anyways. Maybe it's because I say stuff like, it's too bad that Democrats don't care more about dead babies than they do dead Democrats. But, but, that, whatever. I mean...
I understand, but it's, it's stepping outside the specified duties of the county commissioner and into the role of, of activism. And that's why I warn the commission so often about many of these actions, because they're outside the role and scope of what the commission is charged with handling. And lawsuits like this are the consequence. And it's unfortunate that you're going to have to, to pay personal money to defend this.
And that role and scope of a county commissioner is, is exactly the way they control us, staying here at the bottom. They always say, they always say that our democracy is under attack. Our democracy is under attack. All democracy is, is a system of control from the top, because we are not a democracy. We are a republic. We're a republic that's structured through the Democrat process, but we're a republic all the same. As where is the republic or the voice of the people first expressed at? Right here on this board. Our positions are extremely important for the freedoms and liberties and the movement going forward. But as, as, as long as we always cow down to the role and scope of your position, and you have to stay inside this box, and you can't do anything outside of the box, or you're going to get sued, again, it's a system of control. And unfortunately, it's a control through the legal channels that is led, again, by a bunch of bar cert- it's a control through the legal channels that is led again by a bunch of bar certified attorneys that just continue to lead us down the road that we lose everything. We lose our freedom, we lose our liberty. And we may lose leaders that are willing to step up the way I am and speak out against it if counties don't stand behind them and support them and, you know, and defend them and protect them from being removed from office, which is what's going on here. But again, that's, it's my piece and that's probably why I'm hated.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to consider approval of legal representation for Commissioner Griffin and quote warrant to lawsuit filed against him. All in favor, say aye. Oh, can I get a second?
I'll second.
So can I get a vote? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
This motion has failed. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woo!